Good evening, welcome to the September 12th City Council Meeting. Please rise and salute the flag.
(inaudible)
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 Roll call of the members, Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Serino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Counsel President Visconti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of August 22nd?
So moved.
If I can have a moment of personal privilege, if there are no objections, this weekend, the City of Revere lost one of our own. We are deeply saddened to hear of the passing of Counselor George Rotundo. He was a colleague, a neighbor, and a dear friend. He served the council and the city with pride and conviction for probably over 14-plus years, in the best way he knew how. Those that knew George know that he was a counselor that wasn't afraid of voicing his opinion on difficult issues. And the conversations we will be having in these chambers moving forward will not be the same without him. On behalf of the entire City Council, we would like to express our sincerest condolences to the Rotundo family, his loved ones, and everyone that called George a friend. He will be missed by many, and may he rest in peace, my friend. And before we stand for a moment of silence, I would also like to read the resolution of condolence on behalf of the Revere City Council. Whereas former City Council George J. Rotundo Jr. has rendered conspicuous faithful and honorable public service to the citizens of the City of Revere in his duties as City Counselor, and whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has called former City Council George J. Rotundo to his eternal reward, and whereas the sad calling from our midst of former City Council George J. Rotundo Jr. leaves a vacancy in the official family of the City of Revere that will be difficult to fill and a memory that will live long and cherished. Now, therefore, where it, where, therefore be it resolved that the members of the Revere City Council extend to the family of former City Council George J. Rotundo Jr. on behalf of the citizens of Revere our heartfelt sympathy and sincerest regrets on their profound loss. And be it further resolved that in recognition of the former City Council Rotundo's service to the citizens of the City of Revere, that the City Council pays sincere tribute to his memory by spreading upon the official records of the Revere City Council a copy of this resolution of condolence, ordered by the City Council on a roll call. Can we please stand for a moment of silence?
Calendar item number three, motion presented by Counsel McKenna.
To Matthew Di Lorenzo for his heroic efforts to save six families on Winthrop Avenue from a burning apartment building on July 23rd, 2022. At approximately 3:00 a.m., Matthew called 911 and ran into the burning structure without regard for his own safety to alert the families of the fire and get everyone out.
I'm just going to read a little bit of what happened that night. Come on up, Matt.
(inaudible)
On July, I gotta take my glasses off for this. On July 23rd at 3:00 in the morning, a fire started on Winthrop Ave. on the top floor of a large apartment, six apartment complex. Matthew Di Lorenzo, who lives behind the house, smelled smoke and sprang into action. Matthew called 911, jumped the fence, ran into the burning building, and knocked on every single door, getting 30 people out. Matthew then went back to his house and hosed down his house because he didn't want it to catch on fire. So, we have a true hero here, and we really should always recognize a true hero. So, congratulations, Matthew. I'm going to read the citation from the City of Revere. I'm gonna, probably, I have it here. City of Revere, certification of merit in according, in acknowledgement of extraordinary, distinguished, and meditative action, special recognition is hereby accorded to Matthew Di Lorenzo. On Saturday, July 23rd, 2022, you saved the life of several, several families on Winthrop Ave. from a burning apartment structure. Upon noticing the fire in the early morning hours and without hesitation, you jumped into action by calling 911 and ran into a burning building to alert the families to get everyone out safely. You have gone above and beyond the call of a good Samaritan by putting your own life at risk. Your actions will forever be remembered. In witness whereof, the certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the mayor and the City Council of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 12th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2019, and the Independence of the United States of America, the 246th. Signed by Jerry Visconti, City Council President, the Honorable Brian Arigo, and offered by me, Joanne McKenna. I want everybody up here, Whittle's family come up too, please? I want all the counselors, because this is, this is a counselor thing. Here, Matthew, you're going to hold your certificate and take them home.
(inaudible)
Oh.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by Counsel Arkeith, that the City Council awards certificates of commendation to Derrick Amadoris, Jenna Serino, and Arti Cook in recognition of providing free back-to-school haircuts for 30 Revere students.
So, Arti Cook and Jenna Serino were not able to be here this evening, but Derrick Amadoris will be here to, is here to receive the rec, the certification from the council and represent the group. But just something that, I just wanted to, you know, one, thank Derrick for being such a great neighbor. Derrick Barber Shop is on Park Avenue, happens to be down the street. But just, just to give him the accolades and the group the accolades they deserve because the symbolism of a new fresh haircut, you know, kids go back to school every year, a backpack, sneakers, new clothes, they're ready to start off a new year, new journey. And to have that haircut really completes the package. But what it does for a young boy or a young girl and gives them the self-esteem that they want to have going into that first day to really re-impress to their friends that they may not have seen all summer long, to show, show off to their teachers what they've done and, and how good they feel, it's such a positive impact. And I know that Derrick's heart was in, is, is in the right place when he does things like this in his group, Jenna and Arti. Kids in our city, in, in many cities, it's not, it's not very, it's very expensive to get haircuts on a regular. And, and we know how important an image is to kids, especially young, impressionable ones. So, for him to be, give back his craft, what he does as, as a living, to give it to, back to the City of Revere, much like when Derrick coaches basketball in the City of Revere, he gives back, he gives back his love for the game of basketball to kids in the city. He's giving back his love and his craft, and Jenna's giving back their love and their craft, and Arti to what they love, and they're giving it. They're doing this because giving is more important than receiving, and they know the feeling that they get. So, I know that they do this selflessly, and we can just hope that more small businesses, more businesses in our city recognize how, how important it is to be part of our community and to give back and to make sure that they're, they're offering their, their advice and their heart and their guidance to the young youth of our city. It's just, it's just so important. So, I'm so proud of Derrick, he's a friend of mine, we play basketball together, he's much better than me. He's much more handsome than me, too. And I'm just so happy for him and him, Jenna. He is, a little bit, and Arti, for doing that. And doing it, you know, we, we, the City Mayor Brian Arigo and the City Council, and actually, I think WBZ, publicized this, Derrick did not, the group did not. They did this, they very much wanted to do this, almost, almost unannounced, they contacted the schools and said, "We'd like to do this for some of your students that could use it." They never asked for any accolades, they never asked for any attention, but certainly they deserved it. So, wanted to offer that. If Counselor, Counsel President Visconti would like to read the resolution?
You want me to read it?
That'd be great, I'll read it.
You read it.
Wonderful. All right. In acknowledgement of providing free back-to-school haircuts for our youth, special recognition is hereby accorded to Derrick Amadoris.[873.23][873.23](applause) And as mentioned, the same certificate will be delivered to Arti Cook and Jenna Serino for their, their help in this. And I believe, Derrick, I'm not sure if you want to say anything, you know, you're not, but you did, you actually serviced more than, more than, more than 30 children, much more. So, fantastic work, thank you.
Congratulations. I appreciate it. I'll take it. You want to give it to me?
You don't have to speak.
It's okay, Jenna.
Mr. President, we had three items in front of us on the zoning subcommittee. I'll go down them in order. Calendar item 22-208 was the Enterprise Rent-A-Car that was voted on unanimously by the City Zoning Subcommittee with conditions read into the record. So, Madam Clerk, if you'd like to do a roll call with, with the conditions?
Roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested subject to the conditions as reported out of the zoning subcommittee, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit is granted.
Mr. President, the second item in front of us was 22-210 Brothers LLC, and that was also voted on unanimously by the City Council with the conditions that were read into, was the zoning subcommittee with the conditions that were read into the record. Madam Clerk?
Roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested subject to the conditions as reported out of the zoning subcommittee, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit is granted.
And Mr. President, the last item, 22-211, was, was tabled and will be up for further discussion at a following zoning subcommittee meeting to, just to go over the language in the application. And that's all we had from the zoning subcommittee, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel.
Next up is the appointment subcommittee report.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had three items on the agenda today. The first was the appointment of Natividad Hernandez, that was tabled till the next meeting, she was not in attendance. We have the Larry Santos to the Public Art Commission, which was voted out unanimously, if we want to.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointment of Larry Santos to the Public Art Commission, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment is confirmed.
And lastly, we had the reappointment of Lauren Dibella as a constable, that was unanimously voted favorably.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointment of Lauren Dibella as a constable, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Appointment has been confirmed. Calendar item number 11, communication from the City Auditor relative to a loan order for the Wonderland Property Acquisition.
This will be ordered to a public hearing on October 17, 2022.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the City Auditor relative to the appropriation of overlay surplus for the FY 2023 revaluation.
If there's no objection, I'd like to vote on this, this, this evening. Hearing and seeing none, roll call.
Shall the City Council appropriate $75,000 from the overlay surplus account for the purpose of funding the FY 23 revaluation of all real estate and personal properties? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 13, communication from the City Auditor relative to the appropriation from the Community Investment Trust Fund relative to the park grant.
Any questions on this? Hearing and seeing none. If there's no objection, I'd like to vote on this as well. Roll call.
Shall the City Council transfer $84,970 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to the park grant match, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Tom Skierowski as Chief of Planning and Community Development.
Um, yes.
Good evening, Counsel. I come before you asking for an affirmative vote for a residency waiver for Tom, I'm going to try it, too, Swarovski, for his appointment to the Chief of Planning and Community Development. Tom comes with nine years' experience in a similar role in Fitchburg. The most, the past five years, he was the Director of Planning and Development there. He also has a Master's Degree of Urban Planning from Harvard. Tom is here for any questions that the council may have. We, I also have Claudia from HR Carrera, who is here to answer any questions regarding the recruitment process for the city. This has been a tenuous process, so I would love for the vote to happen this evening. So, would anybody like any questions from Tom or from Claudia?
Are there any questions from the, from my colleagues? Counsel Powers?
I think we've all had a chance to look at the resume.
Okay.
And I'm very impressed with it, and I certainly will be supporting him if, in fact, this comes to a vote this evening.
Okay. If, if Claudia is here?
She is.
May, I'm, I'm quite, I'd like to know about the, the recruiting process, and I know he comes very highly recommended, but we are offering a waiver, a residency waiver, and obviously, that being said, I'd like to know what was done within the city, you know, to see if there were any applicants within the city that had the same credentials. And, and obviously, that probably isn't the case since he's before us, but, you know, if you can speak about the, the process.
Sure, of course, that would be my pleasure. So, obviously, what we do is we post the job on the Revere website, and a couple of things we have done lately is that also we have activated our social media platforms such as Facebook, Indeed. Indeed is one of those recruiting platforms, too, it's obviously a social media page, but it attracts a lot of professionals. And what we did is that we invited people to apply through, even Indeed, where we also actually have to pay for, to, to post this job. So, the efforts that we are now have in place are way, you know, than, than they used to be before. In addition to that, we shared the job opportunities with all the Revere city employees bi-weekly, so everybody knows what is available with the goal to incentivize Revere residents to apply for these great opportunities. In this case, unfortunately, that was another case, we, we received three applications. One of them was a Revere resident but with zero experience around economic development, planning, zoning, housing, and any of the required qualifications for this job. The other two, that was the, excuse me, that was the Revere resident, and the other two are the applicants, there are no Revere resident. The other one that is no Revere resident also has zero experience regarding planning and economic development. The only interested candidate that came forward is Tom, and he does have the qualifications that we seek.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you, Counsel.
That explanation, I appreciate it. If, if there's no objection, I'd like, I'm going to torture that name, so I'm going to say Tom, how's that? To come up and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening, Counselors, and thank you for the opportunity to consider this appointment this evening. My name's Tom Skierowski, I think that's how you say it, at least, that's how I say it.[1567.26][1567.26](laughter) I currently serve as the Executive Director of Community Development and Planning for the City of Fitchburg. It's a role pretty similar to the one that I would take here in Revere. We have a Housing Development Division that looks over our CDBG and home allocations from the federal government. We have a Planning Division that serves as the liaison to the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, kind of working big projects through the permitting process. And we have an Economic Development Division focused on, you know, from small business to Amazon, working with all businesses, kind of as the chief liaison through the permitting process, and then making sure they're satisfied in, in the time beyond that. So, I've worked in that position for five years, about four years as the project coordinator for Reimagine North of Maine, which was a public-private partnership focused on the growth of our downtown in Fitchburg. And ultimately, I really love the job that I'm doing today. I wouldn't leave except that I drive about an hour every day to get into work. I live right down the street in Melrose. And, you know, ultimately, I wasn't actively looking for work, I was looking for the right thing. I've, I've seen many opportunities close by, a quick drive away that I turned away. And this is the only job I've applied for since I've been in Fitchburg because I recognize what Revere is doing. I think this would be an incredible city to be a part of the growth that's taking place here, and I'd love to be a part of it if the council would allow me. I look forward to the opportunity and happy to take any questions you might have.
Counsel, my presence for you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Tom, for being here, Mr. President, through you. Tom, could you kind of just maybe say some highlights of project-specific things, accomplishments that you have worked on in Fitchburg? I know I've, I was in Fitchburg earlier this year, and the town is, the city, I should say, is seeing a resurgence, especially with the, having the university and whatnot. But could you talk about some specific career highlights of yours that you brought to the table for the City of Fitchburg?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So, we, a lot of the development that's taken place in Fitchburg kind of falls into two categories. It's, it's either downtown development, which we've seen a real revitalization take place in recent years, kind of centered around the arts and culture, bringing together our university, our downtown business groups, Chamber of Commerce, all focused on kind of seeing that vision through, and that's where a lot of my energy and time has been put. One of the biggest things we just completed in the last year that I helped devise funding for and advocated for and managed the project from start to finish was a downtown two-way conversion project, where basically the entire spine of our downtown was very car-oriented, not friendly for pedestrians. It didn't really make sense for anyone, it's a good traffic pattern. So, it's been something we've talked about for almost 30 years, getting it done, and in my five years in the city, I worked to make that happen and see it through to completion. I was the Chair of our Zoning Advisory Committee that we underwent a 17-month period, taking a look at our economic development strategic plan and, and looking at how we could utilize zoning to help support that plan and help support development and, and really make sure that zoning and our land use is tied to the underlying vision and goals that we have as a city. And, you know, certainly, a lot of that downtown work then came out of, you know, we saw a lot of housing development, we've seen over 350 units of housing permitted and being built right now in that area. We've seen the university investing in our theater to develop a performing arts center - center right across from City Hall and have worked with another local nonprofit and our art museum to create Artist Live Work Housing, all kind of focused in that area around a general theme of arts and culture. A lot of what we've done in the other parts of the city where we're more focused on kind of broader commercial growth and larger parcels on our periphery, I helped oversee efforts to permit an Amazon Last Mile facility in what was an abandoned factory on the edge of the city and, and right on the other side of town worked to take a 100-acre parcel and turn it into an, an outdoor and indoor recreation space we call Game on Fitchburg. That's a center for soccer, lacrosse, axe throwing, if that's your thing, and just generally bringing activities and recreation right next to the Watch You Sit Stop at the commuter rail station there. So, those are just some of the highlights, but a lot of what I do is really focused on policy and systems change, focused on supporting business, and focused on creating plans that really align with the community and helping to build a coalition and build energy around getting those plans done.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I will say that over the weekend, I spoke with Representative Mike Kusmerik, who was a Fitchburg City Councilor prior to joining the legislature, and he just wanted to stress that this is gonna be a huge loss for the City of Fitchburg and that Tom will do phenomenal work in the City of Revere and that we would be fortunate to have him. So, I just want to extend that to my colleagues. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Counsel Silvestri, one's loss is one's gain.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Tom, thank you again for coming up tonight. And I'm excited to have this opportunity to get to, to support you in helping rejuvenate the economy in the City of Revere. We are in a critical point in Revere's history, and, and your experience coming from Fitchburg and having the opportunity to rejuvenate a city like that, you, you have the tools that, that we need. And I like the fact that you weren't looking for a job. You, you felt this is a good fit and, and exciting to have you here, and I will be supporting your waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, Tom, I sympathize with you because I drove from Revere to Fitchburg State every single day for two years, so I know that drive, and it would be really great to have your drive lesson. So, I'll be in support of, of this. I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Morabito, and then?
Thank you. You know, I looked at your resume. We had a, we had an opportunity to speak as well. I think it's been a long time coming. Our city is set up for success, and I think you're the perfect candidate to lead us in, in that direction and to maintain that economic status that we've been thriving for, for a very, very long time. So.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of this.
Counsel Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity also to meet with Tom. A lot of people have spoken about his qualifications. I'd like to say that I think you're a gentleman, and I'm glad you're gonna be joining the team. And also, it was a pleasure being stuck outside of City Hall with you for 20 minutes in 95 degrees. Thank you.
Hard to forget.
If there are no questions, no other further questions, I, I will be supporting this as well. I, this is a position, i- it's, it's very, it's an important position and needs to be the right fit. And I, I think from the consensus from the council, as well as the administration, I think that's you. So, I want to congratulate you, and I look forward to supporting the waiver, which, you know, the City Council doesn't take lightly, and look forward to working with you. So, if there are no further questions, we can vote on this.
Roll call.
This evening. Roll call, please.
In accordance with Section 2.06.060 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, shall the City Council approve the residency waiver for Mr. Tom Skierowski, 956 Main Street, Melrose, Mass.? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fiscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the residency waiver has been approved.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you all.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Lauren Buck as Chief of Health and Human Services.
I once again come before the Honorable Counsel asking for a vote and, and affirmed vote for a residency waiver for Ms. Lauren Buck. Lauren has been the Director of Public Health, and she has been our right hand all along through this COVID pandemic. And so, the process of recruitment would look a little bit different because we looked within. We actually looked to Lauren when this job became available. When Dr. Kong came to us and gave her resignation, there was nobody else that the mayor could think of that could fill the shoes the way that Lauren Buck could fill the shoes. So, I can bring before you, Ms. Buck, and hopefully, we can vote on this tonight as well.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council? Counsel Keith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I know that no, no one in the council takes, takes these waivers lightly, and we, we do look at them all on a case-by-case basis. This one here, although I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you to move to the City of Revere at some point, is, we know what we have. We know the person that's doing the role. She's been doing it kind of on, without the title over the last month since it's been left empty, and since she's been working with us. In the city's, the most historic health crises in our lives, she has helped navigate the city along with her team. So, we know we have an all-star here. Yes, we'd like to get the cherry on top at some point and get her to become a Revere resident because that's the hopes, but we'd be a fool, we'd be fools not to allow this waiver. And I'll be in full support of it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel Morabito?
Thank you. Ms. Buck has proven herself during the pandemic. She really stuck out there. She was really the star in the pandemic. She was the silent star. I was able to have an in-depth conversation with Ms. Buck, and we see a lot of topics eye to eye, and I think she'd be a great fit. So, I couldn't think of any more, anyone more deserving to vote for this waiver than you.
Thank you.
Counsel Silvestri?
Thank you. Lauren, I just want to congratulate you. This is an amazing opportunity. As many of us said, I couldn't think of a better person. You, you jumped into Health and Human Services in the city with two feet in, and you never picked your head up. And I'm honored to, to work in a department that, that you'll be working in and be leading. I want to commend you, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you so much.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lauren, I just want to congratulate you for the work that you've done and how you led the city through a pandemic. It was amazing. So, I will definitely be in favor of this tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lauren, I'm sure we were all in a little bit of disarray when the pandemic hit us, okay? And I happened to be down getting my shots, and I had an opportunity, just on that particular day, to observe you and your input. You seem to be everywhere all the time, doing this and doing that. And I think, you know, the city back then was very fortunate to have you, and I think we are very fortunate today to have you with us here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can end, on our offices across the street from each other, and there have been many nights that I'm either walking into my office and we're talking, I usually walking very late in the evening, but at that time, when I'm walking in, you're walking out, and we're not talking 5 o'clock. We're probably talking 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night. So, it's, when you have something, you're foolish to let it go. So, I want to commend you on the new position.
Thank you.
I think it's a, a, a position well-deserved with all the hours that you put in to your current position and what you did during the pandemic. So, I want to congratulate you, and we'll be supporting this as well.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say, I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I'm, I learn every day. I make mistakes every day. I'll learn every day and make mistakes every day in this job, but I'm, couldn't love working here more, and I'm just very grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council, oh, I'm sorry, in accordance with Section 2.06.060 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, shall the City Council approve the residency waiver for Ms. Lauren Buck, 70th Street, Boston, Mass.? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri? Is recused, and Counsel President Fiscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the residency waiver has been granted.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of William Levy as a Constable for the City of Revere.
In, in reference, um, sub, um, Appointments Chairman, Mr. Cogli, Counselor Cogliandro, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I just, normally, this would get sent to Subcommittee, and in this situation, this gentleman's license was expired while we were in summer session, and he's missed quite a bit of work. And so, I would ask tonight, instead of sending this to Subcommittee, that we vote on this now so that he can get back to working and making money again for himself and for the city.
If there is no objection, I'd like to, we can vote on this evening.
They all mean it.
Okay. Mr. Levy, would you like to say a few words?
I, I appreciate the appointment and the nomination by the mayor and the support of the council, and I promise that I will continue on being a Constable as a disinterested person, but with a heart, and I will never disappoint anybody on the council, or the mayor, or anybody in the City of Revere for not doing the right thing, being honest, being considerate, being kind. And I just want you to know that I'm a Revere guy, and I really care about everybody. God bless.
Thank you. Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. I've known this gentleman for quite a while. I can honestly say that anything that he does, he does to his best ability, and it's always positive, and it's always worked out well. And I wholeheartedly recommend his appointment tonight to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Levy, and I believe there are no other comments, so we'll be supporting this, but let's take a roll call.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointment of William Levy as a Constable? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fiscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I will wish you luck. Thank you.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Sorino that the mayor requests the DPW to utilize CIT funds to repair the traffic island at the intersection of Malden Street and Washington Avenue and to prioritize the reconstruction of sidewalks on Washington Avenue from Malden Street to Sargent Street on both sides.
Counsel Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request that I had put in, not through a motion a while ago, but just through, through 311, through, through the city. And I just wanted to formalize that request. The sidewalks, well, actually, I'll start with the traffic island. The traffic island by St. Mary's Church at that intersection of Malden Street and Washington Ave is deplorable. It's, it's cracked, it's breaking. It's a miracle somebody hasn't necessarily gotten hurt yet on that, that little traffic island. So, if we could use some CIT funds, I know, I think they were supposed to be, it was, it was scheduled to be done this year. I'm not sure why it fell through the cracks, no pun intended, but I just would like to see that. And then regarding the sidewalks, since I was running for office in 2019, this is a major complaint people on Washington Ave have had. The sidewalks, particularly from Malden Street to Sargent Street, are cracked, and we have elderly folks who do walk around and who, people pushing baby carriages, and people are nervous that they're gonna fall. I believe in this case, sometimes people have fallen. So, if we could try to prioritize that and maybe, you know, in time for next spring, to get that done early next year, I would appreciate it. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? All in favor, all opposed? Oh. No, press the button.
Thanks. I moved aside. Mary Gandolfo, 690, Washington Ave, Revere. I put in a special request, as Counsel Sorino knows, and the mayor knows, and the mayor's assistants all know, and I've put in, I've re-upped the request and everything. So, what happened in March, my original request, our sidewalks are in complete horrific disrepair with cracks all broken. You can catch your foot in the cracks, they're so large. There's more grass growing out of them than anyone's got yard in the whole city. It's a disgraceful mess.
Excuse me, what, where?
The sidewalks on Washington Ave.
On Washington Ave.
Yeah, and I'm talking right now, particularly from Italia to Malden Street. That's not a lot of houses right there. We requested it in March. I sent a special letter to the mayor. It was hand-delivered. It was received. I got an email back on April 4th from his assistant saying, "Great news. We've, we've got the money. It will be taken care of." April 4th. I have the email here, okay? So, I didn't hear anything. I figured, well, they're doing a lot of other stuff all over the city, and they'll get to us, you know?
Okay.
I hear nothing, nothing, nothing. I contacted Sorino again. I write on, anyway, in August, I again contacted the city mayor's office. I got an assistant to call me back who said, "Oh, we're trying to figure out..." And he got back to me, and after getting back to me, he said, "Oh, well, we can do one house." I'm trying to get from Malden, I'm trying to get from Italia to Malden Street without breaking my leg. Now, we have, we have a senior citizen veteran who lives there, who had major surgery. He's supposed to walk twice a day up and down the street. He cannot. They're preventing him from getting his health in shape, and I'm further disgusted by the fact that they will tell me, "No, we'll only do one sidewalk in front of one house." There's only about five houses. It's not the end of the world. They told us, they promised in April. So, now, here's the thing, and he's off, he's a Vietnam veteran. He doesn't, shouldn't have to beg the city for a little help. Honestly, he should not have to beg the city for help.
Ms. Gandolfo?
Yes.
I, I don't mean to cut you off, okay? The motion that is in front of us.
It's about Washington Ave.
No, it's about the island. Okay?
No, it is also including.
The entire, okay, the Malden Street in, okay.
Yes, it's including Washington Ave.
Okay.
I am talking about a particular section from Italia to Malden that will not break the bank. We're having a Big Fall Festival. We've had Sandcastle, Galore, everything. Is it their money for a veteran to be able to help him? And, and these neighbors, Dick Safe came out months ago and sprayed the whole place. That costs money. Are we just gonna sit there and call them for no reason? And people, the neighbors, and all of us... And people, the neighbors, and all of us who like, "Oh, thank God, we're going to be able to walk again, we'll have," you know, I mean, we're in the street, it's terrible.
Okay.
Now, the other thing is, um, it, it really is upsetting, uh, we were promised in April. I have the email here, I can give the.
No, no, no. We believe you.
Um, anyway, I contacted mayor's office again in August.
Okay.
And that was when they got back to me and assistant said, "Oh, we can do one, in front of one house, that's not going to help me."
Okay.
Do I have to walk in circles in front of one house?
Okay.
It's not fair.
Okay.
What's right is right. There's a lot of work that went on in the city this year, and I'll tell you, Miami, we got nothing.
Okay.
And we've been asking, Ricky said since, what year were you elected, Ricky?
I was elected in 2019 and I've been asking since 2020.
2019, we're in 2022 now, and not only having to wait till 2019, but I've been waiting six months now for my request that I was.
Mr. President.
Okay. Yes.
The motion that's in front of us is to support what she's asking for, correct?
Abso, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I want, uh, from Italia down to Malden Street, the sidewalks repaved, that's all.
No, uh, well, the, the motion is in, in front of us and, um, we'll, uh, if there are no objections, we will, uh, we will vote on that this evening.
All right, thank you. I'm just, you know, it's really hard when you see someone who really needs the walking and is being prevented from getting healthy. It's not fair, but I'm, I'm requesting the whole council to really support this, please.
We understand, absolutely.
It's not a huge request, but it's a necessary, extremely necessary request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming up and expressing, yes.
Mr. President, if I might, through you to the clerk, just amend the motion at the very end where it says, uh, "To prioritize the reconstruction of sidewalks on Washington Avenue from Malden Street to Sergeant Street on both sides, especially from Malden to Italia." Just to, so when that comes through, the, in the hopes that that will be the first section that could get done.
Great.
Okay. Um, you want, I have a petition, should I submit that tonight, am I allowed to?
You, you have, absolutely, whatever you have.
Like I said, it's only a handful of.
That's okay.
Part of the street.
We'll take everybody who has signed it.
And, no, I do have it, uh, I, I could get more signatures, I just, I've been spending a lot of time, um, actually babysitting this problem because it's extremely important to us.
Important to you, well, we thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and I just, um, I'll give it to you, hon, I, I have the attached email from the original mayor's assistant telling me, "No problem, we have the money, we'll be done." Yeah, I'm going to just staple this if you don't mind. Oh, don't staple it, I understand. Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay, so, can I just, um, I want to just mark it that it's, just, okay.
Okay. You can give that?
Yes.
All right, great. While you're, uh, writing that, why don't we, all in favor, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Congratulations, all right?
I'm hoping that we are doing the series, we can wait for.
Thank you.
Just one, we can wait until next year, one.
Okay.
I'm going to just.
Okay, calendar item number 18, motion presented by Councilor Sorino that the mayor direct the appropriate municipal department to institute a fire extinguisher recycling program.
Council Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. This issue was brought to me by a resident in Ward 6 who received a new fire extinguisher from our fire department, and he had years ago purchased the fire extinguisher that he had in his home from an online website, and he was not able to return that on that, um, online website. He wasn't able to return it to the city. The city told him to contact, I believe it was Clean Harbors in Woburn, I believe that was the organization, but, uh, he went to the organization that the city referred him to, uh, they do not collect fire extinguishers. So he asked me if we could look into, other communities do it, I believe, uh, Woburn, I believe Everett, I believe Malden, um, have programs where residents can, you know, dispose of their fire extinguishers, and I know that they're considered hazardous waste, um, but if we could try to look into this and resolve this, because he now, like, he obviously wouldn't throw it away, um, and he has nowhere to, to dispose of it, because other communities, uh, Cambridge was actually another community, um, Cambridge he looked into and you had to be a resident of Cambridge to utilize the program. So if we could try to establish a program so residents who do get new fire extinguishers can have an alternative to, uh, get rid of them, that their old ones, that would be helpful to this resident and I'm sure others moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any questions? Any wish and speak? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Councilor Sorino that the mayor direct the police department to utilize funds from the Dog Park revolving account to install a camera at the pause and play Dog Park on Sergeant Street in West Revere due to serious issues relative to dogs being abandoned at the park as well as dogs attacking other dogs and people.
Council Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is pretty sickening that I have to put this in for this reason, um, but last month, over the summer, somebody dumped, abandoned two young, or, uh, I don't know if they were young, but two Maltese dogs, and Lisa Cutting at Ocean View Kennels did take them, um, but just utterly despicable that somebody would just drop dogs and abandon them there. Having a camera there, at least we'd be able to see a license plate or catch somebody. Uh, there have also been other issues where dogs have attacked other dogs, people are bringing large dogs into the small dog area and vice versa, um, so just having a camera there and us, utilizing the funds from dog licenses, the, the revolving account there, um, that should take care of it and I think try to, um, you know, uh, stop some of these issues. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Councilor Sorino that the mayor direct the police department to install a camera on the grassy area at the intersection of Steeple Street and Langton Road. Residents have complained about people littering the area with beer bottles and other undesired items.
Council Sorino.
Speaks for itself, Mr. President.
All, Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to show my support for this. I walk my dog in that park once or twice a day and I myself try to pick, pick things up as I see them, um, so this is a much-needed motion, I appreciate this, counselor, thank you.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number, calendar item number 21, place on file. That was my counselor, place on file. Calendar item number 22, motion presented by counselors Rizzo and McKenna that the mayor request the city auditor to identify a funding source for the installation of the speed monitoring devices on Crescent Avenue per Council Order 22-238. Passed unanimously at the August 22nd meeting of the Revere City Council. The implementation and installation cannot move forward without the required funding.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, this got approved by the council and on August 22nd to get a speed, uh, monitor for Crescent Ave, which really is needed, uh, down there, um, and I had talked to the chief, and there's really no money in the police, um, account, um, so, but, um, so I'm looking for money to, um, purchase, uh, a speed monitor. They cost about $10,000 to $12,000. I'm, I don't know if the mayor could, uh, we could utilize this in the, um, uh, the free cash, uh, or, I don't know, I'm just looking for some money to purchase.
Hold on. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Um, my heart is with, my heart is with you.
I'm asking the council if they can help.
Okay. If I, if I may.
Okay.
Uh, you know, my, my heart's with you, I'm, I'm looking for the speed machines too, but when we did the budget, in his budget was 10 speed machines. So the money was budgeted, I don't know why we, we didn't say that it's not, money's not available. We put money in the budget for this, and I think if we look into the budget further, you'll see it in there.
Counselor McKenna, go ahead.
Yeah, um, there was, um, 10, uh, speed monitors, um, that the police station had, it took two years, they had it for two years, and they're all gone now. They have utilized, they have put them throughout the city, so there's none left, um, so.
This budget, this, this project.
Okay, all right, so, I, I mean, I don't know how to move forward with this.
Do you want to put this into a subcommittee or to, to further talk about it, or we can vote on it right now, whatever is the will of the council?
What?
Let's vote on it.
Okay, I'd like to vote on it, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the city council award a certificate of appreciation to Mary Lena LaBrasso for her cleanup of Signori Square, a veterans memorial to the Signori Brothers located at the corner of Signori Terrace and Patriot Parkway.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll save my comments for that evening, but, uh, what a, just what a, a great thing somebody would do, uh, bought everything out of her own pocket and took the time to really spruce up that area, I think that's amazing, and she has plans to do more of that, so I think she's very deserving of this, thank you.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor request the chief of police to increase patrols at the intersection of Romney Road and Patriot Parkway in the interest of public safety. Multiple complaints have come in over the last two weeks regarding motorists not stopping at stop signs causing near accidents.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor request the DPW superintendent to direct a representative from NNM Excavating to appear before the city council to explain some of the recent work that has been going on in the city.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. It seems like we're having an issue with, uh, people working around here. National Grid has, you know, to bring them up, they've really made our city look like a dumpster leaving things around. It was a porta potty next to someone's house for two weeks where there was no work done. Um, now I'm, I'm getting complaints all over the neighborhood and I'm going down to see the work that this company's doing, and they're saying that they don't have frames and, and DOT, uh, regulation sore covers, but I know that they're available at the store in Malden. So I'm wondering if somebody can come up here to talk about not only, uh, why there's a 12 to 18 week wait, but why they're actually paving and putting non-regulation covers on, that they're, it seems like they're adding a step to this whole process. Not only that, they're putting hot top down and then they're putting cold patch over that, which I'm told is a huge no-no. So I want someone to come up here and explain why things aren't being done, and, uh, they, exactly, they're doing whatever they want, and, uh, we, we, you know what, as a council, I, I hope I have everyone's support on this. This isn't just for Ward 3, this is for all of us that are dealing with this type, it's making our streets look terrible, and I put in a motion, uh, a month or two ago, I don't know if it was before the break or not, but about the paving jobs that they're doing, you know, they're Boeing, so now they're causing dips in the ground, they're causing little mini speed bumps in the ground. If, if you're going to work in this city, you need to do the work properly, you need to understand that people live here. So if we could please get a representative to explain what's going on, I, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I agree with my colleague, um, Counselor Cogliandro, uh, Ward 1 is a disgrace. Uh, last week I had a fight with the, um, the supervisor because there was no transparency to tell me or the city engineer that they were going to close down again for the second time Winthrop Ave. They got a detail, but they didn't tell anybody and they closed the street down, and that's a major, uh, street going to Winthrop. So again, they're doing whatever they can, they have, uh, these plates on Winthrop Ave and they have, um, pave, uh, they put tar around it, it's just ridiculous, and these poor residents that live there, every time someone goes over, there's noise, uh, and the street is always utilized for, um, you know, uh, all, at all hours of the day, so something has to be done. And it is National Grid, and it's United Civil, and it is N, NNM excavating, so, but it's all under, um, National Grid's, um, you know, realms, realm, so, uh, we have to do something. Thank you.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. President, I'm sorry. Uh, I agree wholeheartedly, uh, with the make of the motion. Uh, I have a, a pole down Woodland Road in Oak Island that was hit by a car two years ago, uh, it still hasn't been replaced, it's in danger of falling. Uh, I've had people from National Grid, two of the, one of the fellows has just retired down there, looked at it a year ago, still there, uh, I, and I, and was, we got to, uh, excuse me, excavations. I think that there's, anybody who opens a street or a sidewalk in this city should be required to have, before they backfill, because a lot of that material they're putting in isn't suitable, particularly in a flood area, they dig it out, they throw the stuff back in and that's the end of it. So I think anybody who is opening a street or a sidewalk in this city should be required before they backfill to have an inspector go down there, someone from the city, to, I don't care if it's even paid on a per diem basis, it's charged back to National Grid, to make sure that they're putting the right fill in there and it's being compacted right. And that way there, you won't have any, uh, problems. I mean, I see some of the jobs that the city has done around here and the, uh, guidance of, uh, Don Chamela, uh, you know, superintendent, Water and Sewer, Don, uh, perfect. I thought one in front of my house, it hasn't settled an eighth of an inch in two years, and that's the way they all should be. And then, National Grid, they just don't care, they're hiring contractors who care less than they do, and that's part of the problem. And I think we need to get somebody up here to, uh, address this, and if they can't do it, then let's go right to the top of it. Thank you.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to piggyback on, uh, similar to Counselor Cogliandro and, uh, McKenna have been talking about, you know, one thing that I want to make sure we, we do, and I know that with National Grid, they hire subcontractors to do a lot of the paving work, is then a lot of times they offer us money to pay, pay their portion of what they would need to repave the street. It's, you know, it's, it's not a bad practice to take that money and then repave the entire street rather than just having them do a portion of it, but, you know, we should have on our end, the supervisor or someone in the public works department to be able to inspect it before they accept any money, because once they accept the money, they're releasing National Grid from any liability on that trench work. So National Grid replaces the trench, they say, "Here is your $20,000 or $30,000 towards the, the half of the street repair." They're, they're off the hook now. And then, clear, I mean, certainly we can't do every street every year, so if that trench work has to hold for a full year or sometimes two years, it's a real burden on the neighborhood. So I think that if we accept, before we accept any further revenue or money from National Grid, the trench work really has to be verified, and we're seeing that across the city, you know, Vane Street, you know, we just walked Vane Street this week, the trench work's horrible. Um, and unfortunately, we did accept the money, and fortunately, we are going to use it towards repaving the street, hopefully very soon, but it should have never, we shouldn't have taken the money until they did a real, a proper patch, so. This work's happening everywhere, I just think that we need more oversight, the people that, uh, in that position, uh, in our city need to take, I think, a little more ownership in verifying the work, and I know there's a lot, I get it, it's heavy lifting, but someone has to do it, and, you know, we, I think we have people that are capable of doing it, it's just make, making sure that they stay on top of it, you know, with an organizational chart to make sure everything is verified. Every street, every, every job should have some sort of a checklist that someone is signing off on and approving.
All right.
Thank you.
Counselor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I support this motion wholeheartedly. Um, I think it's time that we start bringing the subcontractors in when there are issues. I'm not sure if this particular issue in my ward was this particular NNM excavating, but just, um, so residents out there kind of know what we as counselors are dealing with kind of on a regular basis. Counselor Cogliandro alluded to, um, porta potties and how, um, subcontractors just, you know, kind of leave the neighborhoods a mess, and earlier this year, earlier this summer, there was a porta potty in North Revere on Salem Street, and earlier in the spring, there had been street work done, and I'm led to believe that that porta potty was a part of that, you know, for the workers on that, uh, street, um, that street repair. on that street, that street repair on Salem Street. But then, they never took the porta potty away. The porta potty then fell on its side, so I contacted, I took it upon myself and contacted the porta potty company directly. They came out, instead of removing it, they just tipped the porta potty back on its normal side without removing it. So I called them back. This was like a one-month process. Finally, they wouldn't even tell me who rented the porta potty, what subcontractor, you know, what it was dealing with. So I basically had to say to them, if you don't come and remove the porta potty off city property, I'll put a motion in through the city council to have the city remove it and dispose of it. But if we as a council had the information and knew what subcontractors are where, when, what they're doing, what equipment they have, stuff like that, that could help make our jobs easier when residents who are living across the street are looking at, you know, tipped over porta potty to get it removed rather quickly rather than a month. So I applaud this motion. That's a long-winded way of saying this is a good thing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. All in favor, all, Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you. If they're going to continue to do this type of work, if they're going to continue to not respect our city and the people in it, I would, I would create a motion to pull every one of their permits from doing any work in this city until they actually show respect for the area. And, you know, years ago, I watched Arthur Guanasso put his foot down with National Grid and said, no more work until you do what's right for Fiori's. I don't know if everybody remembers that. And you know what? We should do the same thing. We should put our foot down. I'm tired of them walking all over the city. Thank you.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor, I agree with you, and it wouldn't be the first time that we did this. We did it about four years ago. I put the motion in, and we had a moratorium put on all permits of street openings by National Grid at that time, and they were herding puppies as they were begging us to reopen, as the DPW issues those permits, and they were ordered not to give any street opening permits to National Grid. And if we have to do it again, let's do it.
All in favor, all opposed? Okay. Would you like to speak? Name and address for the, put the.
Mary Gandolfo, 619 Washington Avenue. This has been revisited multiple times, but we all know, one thing is, it doesn't sink for a while after the project's done. You're not going to know it right away. We had one on my street that almost took my tire off. You didn't even know it was there till you get there. But, you know, eventually, someone called and got it done. It's constant, but you have to do something to really get them to, you know, take care of it. You might not see the sink for a little while.
Okay.
So, I mean, they have to stop doing this. They have to straighten it out. It's over and over, we ask them, and nothing gets done. Hold them accountable.
Well, if that's, if that's what we have to do, then maybe we should, you know, consider doing that. All in favor, all opposed? So would it?
Calendar item number 26. Motion presented by Councilors Cogliandro, McKenna, Keith, Serena, Powers, and Novoselfsky that the mayor request the DPW to install speed tables on the following streets. Mill Street, Mountain Ave, Crescent Ave, Park Ave, Yuman Street, Feno Street, Proctor Ave, Sargent Street, Washington Ave, Winthrop Ave, Mills Ave, Standish Road, Sagamore Street, and Rice Avenue. Speed table installations shall include proper warnings, lighting, and signage.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my fellow ward councils for coming on board with this. I, I don't know if I want to call it a pleasure.
Nobody asked us. No, I'm only kidding.
Sorry, Mr. President. I don't, I don't know if I would call it a pleasure being the ward counselor for the first speed table, but it's definitely, it's definitely been upgraded with, they finally put new paint on it, warning signage, speed limit signs. And I'm going to tell you, we've done a lot in this city to try to combat the speeding issue. We've increased patrols in areas, we've ticketed people, we've tried putting the speeding radars to have people slow down, we've added stop signs, and it just doesn't seem to be doing, doing the job. People still don't care. And I know we had some hiccups with this speed bump. You know, there wasn't proper signage put up. A lot of people didn't see it. It was new. We don't have any. But I believe that this is a deterrent, finally, that's, that seems to be working and slowing people down. And I know they're expensive, and I'm hoping that these streets actually get done by the time I'm a grandfather at some point in my life, but, you know, this is a start. And, you know, like I said, I know there were some people that were upset about it. We had an incident with a fire apparatus, but I know that they're happy that we're paying attention to this and we made the proper adjustments to, to make it safe and to let people know it's there. And just one more point. If anybody still thinks that we don't need these, I drove by a 15-year-old girl that had just been hit by a car in Revere Street, and I got out, and thank God, an off-duty firefighter was there, already made the call in. So I'm sorry if people disagree with me. We need these, because I don't want that to happen ever again. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So would it?
Calendar item number 27. Motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the mayor request human resources to direct all departments to amend and/or replace stigmatizing language and terminology with person-centered language in all city departments with respect to substance use disorder, behavioral health, people in recovery, people who use drugs, and people who have been involved in the justice system. This is to include internal city hall, RPD, fire department, public schools, and the housing authority.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion came about through the employees at the SUDY office in recognition of overdose awareness month. This here is, is a, is an important step towards knocking down the stigma of addiction and those that suffer by it, and this is one more way for us to support that and to knock the stigma down. I ask for the council to support this motion, and I'm sure if there's any questions on it that the employees of SUDY can answer on that motion. Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor, all opposed? So would it?
Calendar item number 28. Motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the city council conduct a financial impact study relative to medical and recreational marijuana within the city of Revere. Further, that this discussion be referred to the Economic Development Subcommittee.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, this is a, a motion that is, is very important to me. I, I think that a deep dive into the economic generation that we could, we could bring out of recreational marijuana to the city. I'm not asking for anyone to change their vote, just to agree that we can have a, an educated information put to what cities in, in localities around us are making, how many they have, the laws they put in place, and how to use them. There's a 3% tax on recreational marijuana that we're missing out on, and, you know, I think we sat up here just tonight, and we talk about speed, the lack of money for speed machines. We talk about lack of money for parks and recreational activities and education towards things. That's 3% tax that this body has the ability to say what we do with that money. And we don't have often money that, that we have the ability to do that with, within the city. And I think a study like this is, is important for us, because there are people in the city that are moving forward, looking to put this on the ballot, and I think we should have the ducks in the row before that is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President, and through, not necessarily through you to Counsel Silvestri, but I just wanted to make, make my point. I'd be happy to support Counsel Silvestri, and I understand his plight, and I, and I appreciate his opinion. His opinion matters. He's 1 of 11 up here, and I would not, I will not stand in the way of that if that's what he so chooses and his council wants. I will say that, you know, I've been, I've been, I have not been an advocate for this necessarily in the city, and I want to also state again for the record, there is a, there is a grandfathered license in on Railroad Ave. There's nothing been done about it, nothing. So I, if, if, I would just say that if the money is so great and the, and it's such a thriving business that you think people would be hurtling over themselves to get something done over on Railroad Ave where there's a grandfathered in ability to not only have a recreational license, but a medicinal but a recreational. Again, I'm not in support of that, but everyone has their choice, and I have my reasons. Some of those reasons are personal, and some of those reasons are, I've stated out in the record. But I, I will support my counselor in his, in his want for more information, because I, I respect his opinion, but I will not be supporting much further after that, regardless of the information I get. Thank you.
Counsel Silvestri.
Thank you for the leeway, and let me speak again, and, and I appreciate that, Counsel Keith, and I also appreciate the fact that this is now a billion-dollar industry in Massachusetts, and I appreciate the fact that it just turned into a billion-dollar industry. I appreciate the fact that the city of Lynn brought in a million and a half dollars, Boston brought in a million and a half dollars, and again, to be used in most important ways. And if we're going to sit and talk about financial growth and economic growth and not have the complete knowledge behind it, I think it's being short-sighted, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments? Hearing and seeing. Counsel Keith.
First of all, I want to say it again. Counsel Silvestri, I respect him immensely, and I respect many councils, because I'm sure many councils feel that that's the type of revenue that, that they want. Again, there's 11 people. That's totally okay.
Counsel, I'm not asking for your vote. I'm asking for you to prop, a study on financial and economic growth that could come from this. I'm not asking for you to change your vote on marijuana, sir.
I'm not, I didn't suggest you were.
Well, it seems that way, Counsel.
No, no, let's, let's, let's control ourselves.
I didn't suggest you were. I was explaining, I was explaining to my people, the people that.
And I'm explaining, and who are your people? I thought we represent the city.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Counsel Keith has the floor. Hold on.
Again.
Okay? I've let you go back and forth. Okay? And I, and Counsel Keith has the, has the floor.
This is not personal. This is not personal.
Both have the right to their own opinions, but let Counsel Keith speak.
This is not personal. It's not personal. I'm just creating for the edification of, of people that I do answer to, including every citizen of the, every resident of Revere, my own family, people that care about me and people that I care about them, and I've made, I've made them acutely aware that where I stand, and I want to make sure that they also know that I do respect my fellow counselors, and I will be supportive of them. And I just want to make sure that they understand my stance has not changed, and that's my explanation on when I will be supporting your motion this evening, I want to explain to the people that I do answer to where I still stand, and that will not change, to give them that unwavering support. And what I, and I just want to say that this isn't personal, and it may be personal to you, it's not personal to me. You know, we, we, the city had, the city was divided about revenues when it came to casinos. Does that mean everyone that didn't want the casino money was wrong? No. Does that mean that everyone wanted the casino money was right? No. People had a choice. And I'm just explaining that I will be supporting my counsel because I respect you, and I respect what you want to do, and you know what? Good luck. But I, I'll be supporting you in this and this only. Thank you.
And this, let me reiterate, that this is only for a discussion, not asking anybody for a vote on where they stand on it. So with that being said, if there is, nobody opposes, all in favor, all opposed, it's going to be sent to Economic Development. Okay?
And there's one late motion for this evening. Motion presented by Council President Visconti that the following special legislation be forwarded to the state delegation for approval. An act authorizing the city of Revere to pay a certain sum of money to the estate of George J. Rotundo Jr. The city of Revere may pay an amount not to exceed $39,140 to the estate of George J. Rotundo Jr. Counselor Rotundo passed away while serving as a member of the city council. This amount represents the salary to which he would have been entitled if he had lived and served until the end of his term of office.
This, this is going to go to the estate of George J. Rotundo. All in favor? All, oh, we'll do a roll call on that, I'm sorry. Yes, special legislation. Roll call.
Shall the city council approve an act authorizing the city of Revere to pay a certain sum of money to the estate of George J. Rotundo Jr.? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Serena.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, the special act has been approved.
And before we end tonight's meeting, if I can have a point of personal privilege one more time, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for, on August 25th, Rochelle Shelley Novoselfsky passed away, and we haven't had the ability to, to take a moment of silence on the city council, and I think it's, it's due, and our condolences go to your family and yourself, and if everybody could stand for a moment of silence. And this concludes the September 12th council meeting. The next meeting will be held on September 19th. Good evening. Have a good night.